Happy to be here. They were happy to be here.
Yeah.
Well, good afternoon all. We'll call to order the Alaco Road Connector Colonial Boulevard Alternative Workshop, and I'll turn it over to Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, recall, it's probably back about 2015 or so when you established some priorities for transportation projects, Alaco Road Connector being one of your priorities and the Colonial Boulevard corridor as well. These are just two of your projects that have been in the pipeline for a while now. So today, Randy Cerchi will take us through those projects, and we have some recommendations that we'd like to make to you at the end of the presentation. So why don't we just get right to it? Randy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, today we're going to look at the Alaco Road Connector and Colonial Boulevard Alternatives. When we started ranking our CIP projects, I think back in 2016, you asked us to take a look at four projects right off the bat: Burnt Store, Estero, Alaco, and Homestead. We're on the last section of Burnt Store now; two of them are done. Estero, we're on the last section. Alaco, we should have that done by after, and Homestead is complete. The projects we're working on now are Three Oaks Widening from Maliko to Daniels, Corkscrew Two Phases, the Big Carlos Bridge, Littleton, and Ortiz. The two projects we're going to talk about today, or two more that will be entering, they're already in, but we'll ask you to rank these in the spring when we rank our priorities again. Again, we're looking at the Alaco Road Connector from Maliko Road to State Route 82 and Colonial Boulevard Alternative Analysis. Alaco Road from State Route 82 is going to be a new alignment that doesn't currently exist. The project's about nine miles long. It's a two-mile widening of Alaco Road existing from where we're ending right now to the east, some kind of a major intersection where Alaco heads south to Corkscrew, and then seven miles up through some pretty pristine land to tie into Sunshine Boulevard to State Route 82. There's been an expressed desire to have this job expedite a little bit, so we're going to look at some different delivery methods. And we have three delivery methods that we're going to ask you to look at, and we're going to recommend option number three. If you don't like the three options, you can, again, recommend that we explore another option. Here's the project. Again, we're doing this piece right now from Daniel Griffin to just past Airport Hall Road. That's about two and a half miles. That's $18 million. That's, again, two and a half miles, so you've got another nine to go here. Again, it's going to be about two-mile widening of existing Alaco to what we're doing now, to where it goes south, and seven miles through some pretty, again, pristine land, a big intersection up there, another major intersection here. Ian, this is going to have to go over that. We'll do an intersection analysis report during the design to figure out the best way to do those intersections. Here are some of the properties along the alignment. The alignment's in blue. We have a Florida Rock in the blue, Harper Brothers in the green, Jamerson Farms in the purple, and Lee County in the reddish color. Again, this is an intersection. We'll have to do something with this intersection at Alaco where it's on the Corkscrew.
Randy? Randy, if you walk over to the podium, can you, if you've got a mic you can take with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
If you can look at the top there, you see where the blue alignment comes in. That was the, we did an alignment study back in 2009 for this corridor, and we had a couple of public meetings, and it was chosen for that alignment there. In the meantime, somebody built a 711 on the corner of State Route 82, so I'm assuming that where the blue lines are going to go across. Now we're going to have to get back with Jamerson Farms and do a little bit realigning there, probably get some more right-of-way there as well. I think they'll be happy, though. They'll have two major corners for some big development there. Here are some of the habitats out there. The hash marks are 2020 properties, a lot of mitigation properties for both the airport and some FGCU mitigation. And like I say, it's pretty sensitive land. So when we do the permitting out there, we'll, we're going to do, it'll be a Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, South Florida Water Management, pretty good permitting effort. Here are the two big slots of rights of way that we purchased already back in 2009. The green piece is 1.7 million, is 250 feet wide, and the blue piece we're buying right now is 150 feet wide. That's roughly what we need, is about 150 feet. We have existing 250 feet. This is where the Alaco project, we're building now. It's about 250 feet of right-of-way, goes down to 200, then to 180. Again, we need 150, so we'll need to get about 50 feet from one of our homes through Here are the three alternatives. The first alternative is Lee County doing a PDNE, a Project Development and Environmental Study. Second option is FDOT doing a PDNE. The third option is no PDNE. FDOT's indicated, and FDOT watches over all the PDNEs in the state. The federal highway's giving them that authority, so no matter if we do a PDNE with FDOT or not, we'll have to work and true FDOT. They've indicated that this is not going to be a categorical exclusion, type-two categorical exclusion PDNE, which the Big Carlos Bridge was. It was pretty easy. There are three phases, or three levels of PDNE. They're saying it's at least going to be environmental analysis, which is an EA, and it could rise up to be an environmental impact statement. Each are a little more costly and a little more time-consuming. In addition, FDOT indicates they want us to do a corridor analysis, even though we've done a corridor analysis and purchased the rights of way accordingly. So if we forego the PDNE and any chance at federal funding, which what the PDNE does, it gives, you work through a NEPA process, National Environmental Protection Act, and that allows you to get federal funding. If we forego that, we can start the project. You can see the blue by 2025 as opposed to sometime in 2030. That four-and-a-half years will save about $12 million in construction money right off the bat. We surveyed probably 20 different agencies, Tallahassee, Miami, Collier County, some other areas, and we found anywhere from 2.5% to 3.5% cost increase from year to year. So we averaged about 3%. So if we start that job four-and-a-half years earlier, right there, we're saving about $12.5 Some of the pros and cons. Again, with option one, with us doing the PDNE, the pros are you do have a possibility of securing federal funding. The cons are, again, they want to do a two-year alternative analysis, corridor analysis, a four-year PDNE. It'll take away the board's ability to make a lot of decisions when the PDNE's been going through FDOT, and, again, the federal funding is not guaranteed. Option two, with FDOT doing the PDNE, again, the possibility of any federal funding that exists, and, again, the cons are it includes a two-year corridor analysis, a four-year PDNE study, further degradation of your powers, if you will, with FDOT doing the PDNE, and, again, the federal funds aren't guaranteed. If we forego the PDNE, again, we'll be, there's no two-year corridor analysis, no four-year analysis, and, again, that earlier start time will save us about $12 million. The cons, again, without going through the NEPA process associated with PDNE, will be foregoing any federal funding. However, we still may be able to get a chance to get state funding, either SIGP grants or TRIP grants. This is a kind of long-range view. Our alignment, proposed alignment's down there in the red. That will tie into Sunshine and Lehigh. There's only two ways out of Lehigh. The yellow circles up there currently at Buckingham and Joel. The Lehigh's getting rather congested up in that area. If we widened Sunshine over the years and then made that connection to State Route 80, that would be a nice corridor and take a lot of heat off Joel Boulevard. It'd take a lot of heat off a lot of roads.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dave?
Thank you. Commissioners, when Randy was talking about us not doing the PDNE study, the piece that we would like to get across is we are still going to do all those environmental components associated with building the road like you would do with the PDNE. So that piece will still happen. We just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yeah, you know, if I could jump in real quick. Can you go back to the previous slide, Randy? So this is the slide that I think tells the story here. Randy, I'd like for you to elaborate a little bit on. I know you all have run the traffic models, and I know the MPO has run the traffic models as well for our long-range transportation plan, but this is the slide that tells the story about what this Alaco connector can do. Supposedly, it will be one of the biggest relievers to the traffic congestion that we're seeing on Colonial and Daniels. Talk a little bit about how it works.
Some of the modeling we did on the section of Daniels from I-75 to Gateway, it'd take about 15,000 cars a day off that section of Daniels, 19,000 cars from Gateway to State Route 82, 13,000 cars a day off State Route 82, 9,000 cars a day off a Colonial. So having this in place, the sooner the better is probably the way to go. It's just a, it's a great traffic reliever to other roadways as well. In addition, it takes a lot of cars, again, off State Route 82, therefore, FDOT would smile on that with any available state funding.
And even if we didn't have the PDNE completed, because we're going to go ahead and check all those boxes, as Dave just said, we're going to do all the environmental things that we're required to do, but, you know, the delay, not only is a cost concern, the delay with taking the time to do that study, that takes four years, but on top of that, a big concern that I have is just, we kind of needed this road five years ago. When you look at the congestion on Colonial and Daniels, and if the modeling talks about the kind of relief that it talks about for those two roads, I think it's important for the quality of life of our residents that we try to expedite this. I appreciate you bringing those plans forward.
There's a certain, what I didn't really want to get into that much, but a few universities have done some studies that range anywhere from $13 to $18 an hour for vehicles sitting in traffic. Lost production at work, wasting fuel, wearing, tearing your vehicle. So, again, we have 7 billion vehicle miles driven in Lee County each year. Those numbers that I just said, times $13 an hour, that's not a savings to us necessarily, but the folks in Lee County are going to realize that kind of a savings. And, again, to follow up on what Dave said, I should have said some more. We're going to have to get a Corps of Engineers permit. That brings in Fish and Wildlife. And with South Florida, we're going to jump through all the hoops that we would going through the NEPA process, except the NEPA process, again, is a very defined process. You have to go through all these documents, have them signed, have them laid out in a library for review for a month, you know, type thing. It's just a certain process to it. We will check all the environmental and hydrological aspects of this project without going through the NEPA process regardless. With Rowland's work that they've done on these flood mitigations, too, again, all that water over the years, the last 10,000 years since the Ice Age, trying to get through the Cluacy River. So we're going to make really sure that when we raise that road this high, which we'll probably get raised about that high, we've had the correct culverts and good water flow. I don't want to get those folks any more wet than they already get on Wildcat Run and Green Meadows Road.
I think it's really important, the way Brian brings that up, and I'm glad you covered that yesterday in our briefing, Randy. The congestion there, when you look at those numbers of 15,000, 19,000, 13,000, 9,000 a day, we're going to have over 20 million vehicles a day, you know, for the year if you combine them. So, I mean, congestion is key, as Commissioner said. I mean, obviously, the funding aspect was so much cheaper in that regard, so, you know, the other aspect of this, obviously, is what's the overall cost and in the environment we're in right now, interest rate-wise? I mean, we'll start designing, what's the design? Could you bring that screen back up when you showed the design? You laid out, you laid out the chart.
It takes two clicks to make a move, so it's a little tricky.
There you go. So you can start, you know, in that design and permitting within a year.
Depending on your decision today, we're going to start next week. I mean, getting stuff.
Another reason, too. I mean, obviously, with the costs associated with this, I imagine we're financing in some environment, whether it's a bond or a note. Interest rates couldn't be better, so not only do you save interest, you know, you have an opportunity to improve quality of life, and you're also saving taxpayer dollars. I mean, to me, this is a no-brainer.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Zane, this is a very important part of the conversation that you all are having right now. We, even if we don't do a PDNE, nor does the state, you know, as Randy has suggested, we still do all the same environmental reviews and same environmental permits as we would with a full-blown PDNE. The only risk with all of this is the loss of federal funds. Well, when you consider that the federal funds for transportation really haven't materialized in the last year or so, and it's even worse now with the relief packages, you know, the, what, what do we have, $2 or $3 trillion? $3 trillion right now. To think that Congress is going to come up with a new pot of money for a transportation project seems a little unlikely. So when you start to consider the environmental impacts will be the same no matter what. We're going to save, you know, $12.5 million by getting this project started sooner than later, and we get this project started and finished sooner than we would with a full-blown PDNE. This, option number three, really does make sense.
I, just a couple of comments. I talk about growth a lot here, and it seems that, talking with John Talmadge and everybody else, is that we're seeing as much interest from inside the state as we are from outside the state. So we are, I think we're in a good position to capture some of that business. Now, look, my wife and I drove up to Tampa last weekend, and I remember when Northport was down to four lanes, and it was a little bit of a choke point. Now that's been expanded. Then you get up to Sarasota and it's expanded more. So to me, this is very important to the 75 corridor. What can we handle on that? And how much will this alleviate, you know, that pressure? The other thing, too, is that they're increasingly important, you know, to how we're going to handle commercial product and so on and so forth. Coming down out of Lehigh, which is so important to our labor base, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, people will look at the airport, they'll look at, how do I get there? How's my labor base, where's it coming from? And I think getting an earlier jump on this than later, to me, is extremely important.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on that slide, Randy's brought this to us today because we told him, asked him how we could speed this project up. That's what we're talking about. And we're pretty, they're pretty well convincing us that, take this option three and go with it. We lose the federal funds, which we might not get anyway, but it does speed the whole thing up. Everybody's in favor of that. We were before, we still are. Go to the last red line at the top of the chart, and I talked with Randy and Dave about this when we had our individual briefing just yesterday. I'm familiar with that little red streak that goes through River Hall subdivision. If you back up 12 years, maybe 13 years, that was planned to be an artery to go on through there, and talk about a reliever for all those folks in that part of Lehigh Acres that are not coming to the interstate or 82. That would be a natural place, and it was on our long-term plan to make that connection. But there was, when I'm talking about 12, 14 years ago, strong pressure from the residents in River Hall to not dump those 10,000 cars a day that might ultimately be in their backyard. So the commission, at that time, took it off the plan, the long-term plan. But when we, when we tell them to keep going with this project, and you start looking at that, and you start getting your cards and letters from the people in Lehigh, they're saying, why are you not connecting that? I think we need to have a healthy, open discussion right now as to whether or not the county is, in fact, going to consider that, because any engineer, any mathematician will tell you it makes sense to do that. But I can tell you politically, it's a hand grenade with a pin hanging out, and you want to be careful about. So I'm mentioning it because I think it needs to be mentioned and talked about and put on record again that our staff is, in fact, considering that right now, and we may get an opportunity to talk about that again here, because we're going to have to add that to the plan. It's not on there right now. Correct, Randy?
It is not.
But everything about that picture tells you, it makes practical sense. I'm just telling you, there's a political component here that we might want to think about, and to be honest with the citizens out there, let them know we are thinking about it, because you're going to get people want it as well as those that don't.
Mr. Chairman? Randy, what's your sense of timing on that part of the project?
Oh, again, based on the graph we just showed, it's going to be at least nine years to get the red project done, to get to what we're talking about here. So, again, if we do widening the green in sections over time, there's a big canal to the right of it, so it should be pretty easy getting some rights-of-way. You're 15, 20 years away from needing that. However, with all due respect, it wasn't too long ago that the folks in Estero told us, there's no way you're going to the four-lane Corkscrew. Now we can't get that built fast enough, so things change over time, especially 20 years out.
With all due respect, back, you'll have a whole lot more people living in River Forest, I mean, in, what did I just call?
River Hall.
River Hall. That are not going to be happy about that. I just want us to be wide open with all the folks that live out there that will be impacted by that. That's thousands of cars a day that'll be going through the yard that aren't going there right now, and there's a couple of schools out there, too.
But I think it's a timeframe you just, that's the monk in the room. The timeframe you're looking at, even to solve that, we're 15 years out. We can, we'd say we want to do it 15 years. I can guarantee you won't be sitting there, Frank.
You just don't know about the old man. He just keeps repeating.
I'll say it a different way. I won't be sitting here.
For the love of the place.
But, I mean, the timeframes are just, that's your Achilles' heel, 15 years.
Right. And I think that's something we should talk about, because, you know, I think there was a trend, probably in a period before I got on the board seven years ago, where it seemed like the theory was if we put off infrastructure projects, if we just don't build roads, then people won't move here. Well, news flash, people kept moving here. So we see how that story ends now, and I think, you know, they say the idea of doing the same things over and over again and expecting a different result is probably, you know, the definition of insanity. Well, so we, I don't think we can do the same things over and over again. I think we need to understand where we live and the character of our area, which is the fastest or one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. Okay, so people are going to move here. I think it's better for us to then plan ahead of time where they should drive and how they should get around this county, as opposed to having to react 15 years from now, knowing that it's going to take 15 years just to get something permitted and designed and built. So, you know, I understand, I do. It's a horrible, it's a horrible balancing act. You don't want to disappoint your neighbors. You don't want them to be, you know, upset about a road that they may or may not like being near their community, but you, this is one of those times when you take a holistic approach and look at the traffic network in the county, and you realize that, boy, for the greater good of the county and the residents here, it probably would be incumbent upon us to plan, okay, how do we get people from Lehigh down south, or how do we get people from Lehigh out to State Road 80? And so I don't think there's anything wrong with planning those things, because, you know, I mean, until you stick that shovel in the ground, there's always a point then to turn around.
Commissioner Hammond, you used a, you know, a term that makes an awful lot of sense, and I just lost my mind.
Well, let's go ahead. It did make a lot of sense.
Yeah. It does make a lot of sense, that longer-range planning. We, yes, people are going to be upset, but for the sake of the network, is what you said.
Yeah.
And all of these projects are about the network and moving traffic, relieving congestion, adding capacity in a way that makes sense, and this is just one of those elements that simply makes sense, in spite of the difficulties that we're going to encounter.
I've been through a lot of commercial development, and people fought us tooth and nail on a lot of things, for a variety of different reasons. I respect that. When the project was done, there were some of the first ones you saw, taking advantage of some of the projects that were now serving the community. So, you know, the fact that it is more dense up there, the fact that there are more people, we all want to move quicker and faster and more efficiently. So I agree. I think the planning phase is good, and we'll see how it goes once we disclose it and see how people feel about it.
And Randy, what's the overall cost of, your projected cost on this?
About $100 million.
What's the other issue you have is not only it's 15 years, but we're already spending $100 million. So let's just understand, at some point in time, you put your priorities, and that's what we do in MPO for years, we put this as a priority. And it's just, it's unfortunate, but at some point in time, your priority's going to take the priority, and you're just not going to be able to continue to do whatever you want, dollars and cents-wise, we're just not going to have that money.
That's the government, Mr. Chairman.
And you know me, Frank.
Who's got it? Who takes it? Who spends it?
But local government makes sure we spend it wisely, and we do it a lot different than any other entity.
You'll find we always spend it wisely here. You've joined an efficient, crack team.
I am confident of that.
Real quickly, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask it publicly, even though I did talk with our team about it in my briefing, too. I, you know, so I am thrilled with the three options they presented to us. I think, you know, I am definitely in support of option three going ahead and trying to expedite the construction and the finishing of this project, but I do want to ask it out here so you guys can answer it, too. You know, that's still 2031, before we're driving on this road, and, like I said, we probably needed it a few years ago. Any way we can get it done before that?
Yes. We can offer an early finish bonus. That's what they did on I-75 widening. They offered a $15 million early finish bonus. It went from the project managers to, down to the truck drivers. That's why I used to drive by there on Sunday afternoons, see the guys out there smiling. Why do they smile about a Sunday afternoon? They knew they were finishing early. So there are some incentives we can do to speed this up.
I, you know, obviously, we've got a long ways to go on planning and budgeting this, but that'd be something I'd like to see us entertain.
Good.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Need congestion relief as quick as possible, Mr. St. Lucius, a while ago.
Randy?
Okay. Randy? Colonial Boulevard Analysis Study. If you remember years back, College and Summerlin was the worst intersection in town. And we put that overpass, Summerlin over College, and works really well now. Then Gladiolus and 41 was bad. The state came in there, did some work on Gladiolus. One of the worst intersections in town now congestion-wise. So we're going, we asked a consultant to take a look at this and come up with some And the options they came up with, we'll go through them, but we have a couple of questions. They came up with four options. First one was some safety improvements. Second one was some intersection improvements. Third one was a one-direction flyover. And the fourth one was a grade separator, which is fancy for a bridge, all the way from when you hit the river coming into Fort Myers, and tied into 41 Bridge. The last two work best with widening the midpoint bridge as well. So we're going to ask you, as we go over there, if you'd like to do some of the easy stuff. The first two bundles, the safety improvements and the intersection improvements, don't do anything for congestion, but the last two do, and we'll go over that in a second. We looked at level of service, time travel, vehicle throughput, the total number of vehicles through, network performance, average speed delay, stops, and demand. way to US 41 with probably a hundred ramp at Summerlin. Both of those last two work best with widening the midpoint because again, without having the midpoint widened, the congestion point is still at that traffic signal, Colonial and Summerlin. The improvement bundle, bundle one, is your safety improvements, proctor will cost about Some sidewalk connections under Colonial McGregor, closing RARCO, update some activated peg controls and countdown peg controls, and they look like this. Here is some of the work we could do underneath the current midpoint bridge at the McGregor This is the left turn lane, the westbound left turn lane into the Broadway Palm Plaza. We, I checked the crash counts on this, there were three or four per year last four years. Some intersections on Del Prado, we've closed, the median when it has six to eight, six to eight crashes per year. That gets more of our attention. Right around when, when we see about five per year, we start looking at some countermeasures. This could be closed, I imagine there'd be a lot of pushback. So again, it's not something we have to do right now, it's just identified as a safety feature. The second bundle is some intersection improvements. These are about $560,000. This is the intersection of Summerlin and Colonial. You see right now that the northbound Summerlin is dual lefts, a straight and a right. We're planning to make that three lefts and a right, two lefts and a straight to a right. That'll get a lot more traffic around the corner here. We can do it in the existing area, there's no additional rights of way to buy. We can just do that with some striping. Again, you're still going to have a bottleneck when they try to get onto a two lane bridge. But we're probably going to start that now with your concurrence.
Wait a minute, I didn't understand what, how you concluded. On the three turn, three lane option, it seems like a good idea, it would make that intersection easier. But are you saying since it bottlenecks where it reaches further toward the bridge, that it doesn't make sense to do that?
It makes sense as much as you'll have three lanes moving through the intersection. That gets more traffic through the intersection. Roughly a third of the traffic dives off on McGregor. So they'll be taking that right turn at McGregor, the other two will go over the bridge. Regardless, you're still going to have some merging traffic going onto a two lane bridge. This does clear that intersection better though.
Okay, so the negative impact is outweighed by the positive impact of running more cars at that intersection.
Correct. The next intersection to the east is De Leon. That's a city street, City Fort Myers Street. They like this outcome and they're going to do that. They're going to make some striping changes on their street as well. They can do that within the right of way existing, so that'll help them as well. Again, neither the safety improvements nor these intersection improvements really hit the big problem there. The third is a north to west flyover, similar to the curved flyovers, the Gladiolus and Summerlin. That's about a $12 million cost and includes design and construction, but not any necessary rights of way. That is again, a bridge in the red, the red is the bridge. As you're coming up Summerlin, take that whole movement up and out of the intersection and, you know, three lanes heading to the bridge again, widening the bridge, it'd really be helpful on this one. You still, everywhere else you have a merge here. So again, with all that traffic listed up and out of the intersection, we add a lot more green on the surface there for Colonial. That is an option that really works well. This actually performed better than the grade separation in PMP on the way home, went back into Cape Coral in the evenings. The fourth option again is that grade separation, that's a bridge all the way as you're coming into Fort Myers, stay elevated all the way to US 41 with an off ramp at Summerlin. And widening the midpoint bridge. So again, with that red curved bridge and widening the midpoint bridge, that would be about 137 million with the grades separated all the way to US 41 and widening the midpoint bridge, be about 285 million. And again, the 137 million option works best in the PMP.
So you're asking, do we want three or four, not three and four?
Right, right. One, two, three, four. We're probably going to do one and two now, the ones that are, if you will, low hanging fruit. I'm asking if you would consider either three or four.
But you're saying four is far more expensive?
Yes. And I think it was going to be a lot harder.
Twice the price.
And I thought I heard him.
Twice the price.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Face the price.
Twice the price.
Yeah.
And I thought I heard him also conclude that it wasn't going to be in terms, in terms of traffic move, that much better than the flyover.
That's correct. In PM, in afternoon peak, people going back into Cape Coral in the evening, that flyover and widening the midpoint bridge works better than the overpass does, the grade separated. Now, the good thing, I'd like to have a little discussion at this point about widening some bridges. In 2028, we plan on widening the Cape Bridge, the bridge south of the midpoint. We're going to widen the westbound span, it's just an old bridge due to be replaced. We're going to widen it from existing two to three lanes. I would like at that point in time to consider widening the eastbound span, one more lane as well. So you have one new lane in both directions. If we go with option three or four here, preferably option three, and widen the midpoint bridge as well to six lanes, one lane and again in both directions, you would have two new lanes each direction on two different bridges, which equals kind of a new bridge. City Cape Coral's desirous of a new bridge and a new location, which would be tough to do, but this is an opportunity that would work well for both cases here. The grade separated, if you kept this up in the air, you come into Fort Myers, all the way you tied into US 41, I think City Fort Myers and the businesses along there would have some, some negative thoughts about that. One other fact on that.
You mentioned Randy on the flyover option, you know, obviously it has the greatest impact on the rush hour coming home. Does it do anything to help on the way to work in the morning?
Yes, by taking that complete movement up and out, that red movement, everything northbound to westbound is going to just keep moving. So there's no giving them any time on the signal. Every signal rotation we have is about minute and a half, two minutes. That's, that's, that's green this way, green that way, turn lanes this way, turn lanes that way, peg this way, peg that way. So I can take all that time given to that northbound to westbound movement and add it all to the green on Colonial, so I would help that direction as well. And again, widening the midpoint bridge works best with both options, three and four. Now, all of this work, unlike the Alico project, all of this work can be, you, we can use surplus toll funding because they're both on the toll corridors. So that's, that's a, that's a bonus for this project. Although there are competing projects in the surplus toll, like the continued widening of Burnt Shore all the way to County Line type thing, and we have a big VES, vehicle enforcement product for the tolls coming up. We have a lot of toll talks coming up, so, but again, this is going to be, we can use toll funding for this project.
So when you, when you widen the midpoint bridge, you're going to widen it out to six lanes, three on each side?
Right.
And would you have to take that, you'd have to run that all the way up to the toll plaza now then?
Yes.
Okay. And then at that point, doesn't it become six lanes on veterans?
Yes, it is. It is.
Okay. And so that's included in your estimate that you gave us for price here?
I don't think, I'm not sure of that. That's a simple road widening for about a mile, that shouldn't be too bad there. It's pretty flat terrain there. It's just further towards that parking lot over there.
Okay.
I'm still not clear here. If we sign off on the one we're looking at, which you guys seem to like, and I don't have any real issues there, are we simultaneously signing off on the widening of the midpoint bridge?
We, every year we come to you again with our list of priorities in the CIP. These, if you're okay with this, we could, we could build that bridge, maybe widen the westbound direction one year or at some point in time, sometime later widen the eastbound direction. We can break those up and bring those to you in different segments type thing, which would be easier for you. I don't want you to think that if you're approving something, you're signing on for everything. I'd just like you to approve a concept. Would you like this overpass or a continuous bridge all the way across, you know, all the way to 41 type thing? We can break down how we deliver it over time.
And I like the word concept. I mean, I think that's really what you're buying into. And the other issue, you know, that it's going to be a toll funded situation, and I know just having come from Sanibel, most of the debt on the midpoint, if I'm not mistaken, Pete is really Sanibel's portion, correct? That's outstanding. So I think we're probably in a really good position because if you're, I know we've probably secured both tolls for the bonding, but the bulk of it's Sanibel, if not all of it. I mean, there's almost nothing left on the Cape Coral Bridge, my recollection, and probably very little on the midpoint that's really associated with Cape Coral.
That's correct.
It'd be another great opportunity to go out and do this. Obviously go out and do some bonds associated with the toll revenue that's coming in the door. Rates couldn't be cheaper. And so I just think that's important. Pete, you wouldn't know capacity wise, what was the total, I know Sanibel was at 141 just because I came there, but how much was the total debt on the midpoint? You have an idea what the peak was?
The remaining?
No, no, just, I mean, so at Sanibel's high, it was 141. I don't know what was the cap piece, so I was just curious, 160, 180, 200?
I don't have that off the top.
I'm just curious. No problem. But I think that's important when you know it's a toll world that you're looking at, you know, the revenue associated with this, so you get to address an issue. I mean, also, we've paid down the debt and, I mean, it's an infrastructure, a long-term project, it's what bonds are used for.
Yeah, there's a, we can use a combination of both surplus tolls, if we have, if we have enough collected to do a smaller debt issue, but it'd be a combination of surplus tolls and then debt.
I know the coverage issues back in yesteryear was a little bit higher. Are they still around 120?
Yes.
Okay.
Randy, if I'm correct from our last discussions, by widening both of these bridges, that would preclude having to build a whole new bridge.
That would give you.
We have the same capacity and we have the same ingress and egress points, both sides.
Same capacity as if you built a new four lane bridge, correct?
Okay.
Which would be a permitting nightmare and probably a lot longer than anything we've shown thus far.
Thank you.
And again, we can bring you these, we'll bring you these as we prioritize each year.
Do you have a slot projected for where this would fit into the CIP? Is this a six to 10 year or further project? Or is this something that could get done sooner than that?
Well, again, we'll sit down as we bring you our projected CIP this year, projects, and we'll try to take a look at traffic, try to take a look at congestion, and try to take a look at development and see what would be the best way to break these up and bring them to you. I think if we started now, it's probably going to be at least five or six years. And again, we're starting our design next year for the 2028 replacement of Cape westbound span, so these big bridges take a little bit of time. So if we could just get an idea of the concept that you'd like to see, then we can, we would know how to break it down and bring it to you as CIP potential projects over time.
And Randy, remind me again, Big Carlos and the bridge on the north end of Fort Myers Beach, that timeframe is 22, 23, 24?
My understanding is F does going to start the widening of the Matanzas Bridge simply to add an eight foot pedestrian path on the ocean side there in '22 as part of a big project. They're also going to do some work on San Carlos Island, widen that bridge, and then put signals down at the bottom type thing.
So this is after that, after those?
Way after that.
Okay.
Way after that.
So Commissioners, we sometime in the next, I think, four months, three or four months, we'll be asking you for a conversation on transportation priority projects. And we have the, you know, three tiered system each year. I mean, you take a look at that and you see if any of the priorities have changed. And so now we add these projects to that, to the, to the three tiered evaluation system. And that's, I think, will in part determine some of the timing, some of the timing for all of this.
A related question before we say nodding heads. You don't need to back up, but to build that left turn flyover, it seems to me the, the worst case scenario for a traffic nightmare during construction. Have you any, can you make me feel better at all? Is that just going to be a nightmare for sure? I mean, there's already, it's a, it's a nightmare of traffic as it is, and then we're going to put 50 trucks and 300 people working in there? How do you do it? Can you do it all at night? I mean, what is, is there?
We can do a lot of it at night. I mean, any bridge involves driving some pile, drive the pile down there, we can set the beans, the big closures at night like we usually do. There will be intermittent traffic delays and we'll urge you to choose a different route for the time being, but I can't lie to you and say it's going to be easy. It'd be tough.
Commissioner, the only thing I can tell you is having lived through the Sanibel Bridge, that was built, I mean, a lot of it was done at night. I'm not saying it wasn't painful, but a lot of it was augmented in the evening and someone that probably had over that bridge two or three times a day.
Well, there's an old saying, says we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
No, I think it's a great question.
But we're going to have to deal with that issue. And I'm sure at the time, all the engineers in your department will make every effort to limit that disruption, but man, it's going to happen at that intersection.
Yeah, I love your question because, I mean, let's think about this. If we were to undertake a project like that flyover, you're right, that's going to be a complete and total nightmare for the midpoint bridge and the folks who count on that to go home every, every night. I almost wonder if, do you widen the South Cape Coral Bridge first so that it can handle a little more capacity before you take on the flyover project? So that at least, okay, we're going to basically do a project that's going to cut down the number of people who can go over the midpoint bridge for a temporary period of time, but at least we've now added more capacity to the south bridge so it could accommodate that extra traffic? Or, you know, at the very least, I think we'd have to make sure that there are no projects on the Edison Bridge, the Kaluza Hachi Bridge, or even the other South Cape Bridge. We don't want to have, we can't work on two bridges at the same time, I don't think, because we would need all the other three corridors open fully to get people on and off if you're going to congest one with, with temporary construction, you know, knowing it is temporary, but it could be a year anyways, 18 months to construct, so.
I agree with you. And that was some of our thinking is maybe, that's why I say we can break these projects into pieces and bring them back to you at prioritization time in a sequence that makes sense for just those reasons.
I think Brian, you bring up a great point. I really do. And, you know, from a concept point of view, maybe I have a different vision of concept than we all might, but just to look at the way this concept. But just to look at the way this concept does, some of the challenges, some of the, you know, where we're going to fund it and some of the timelines associated with it. I mean, that's kind of what I have in my head for a concept. More, more like a layout of, of what the plan might look like, you know, conceptually. And we'll talk about some of the big challenges we're going to have. We're going to have to address those. And I think Commissioner Mann put it great. I mean, we do have to address that. So, and your idea of maybe augmenting some of the issues we might have, again, the concept, you know, once we identify the issues, then we can say, okay, we have a problem here and how do we, you know, potentially make adjustments to ease some of that? We're not going to sit here and promise everybody this isn't going to have some period of, you know, a real inconvenience, but how do we mitigate that? And I think how we also let the public know we're mitigating that. But that's what I envision the concept. Is that okay?
Well, I, I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, I'll say, you know, with the questions that they put before us, do you concur with the recommendations? I do. I like, obviously bundles one and two, as they said, are easy and it sounds like they're going to get working on those. I, I would prefer, and I think it's more feasible to do the flyover option, just when you look at the cost and the impact that it's going to have. And then, you know, do you want us to explore the option of adding an extra lane to each bridge? Yeah, I want to see that conceptually laid out for us and what that looks like. I think it was very wise for y'all to come to us and say, do you even want us to go down these roads, you know, before, before we spend all the time and effort exploring these? And I, I do. I think, you know, I think those are the ones I'd be interested in seeing you spend the time and effort to explore.
I, I do. I think it's, it's something we should explore as quickly as we can, just to see that. And I also, just in the back of my head, knowing it's going to cost dollars, just to try to have a feel for the revenue that's collected from the midpoint Bridge and the actual debt is associated with the midpoint Bridge. Because the bulk of the debt, as I indicated earlier, is Sanibel. And I know that coverage was like 170. I mean, it's, it's a really great surplus. So you're pledging that anyway. So you do have some additional capacity you get because of, the Sanibel coverage has always been amazingly high. A lot of debt, but still, you know, from a bondholder point of view, you're looking for, a lot of bonds are 110, tolls are generally 120. Sanibel's coverage is about 170. So that's one of the things we're pledging. As my last recollection of looking at the Sanibel, it's way up there. So we have a lot of capacity and with interest rates as low as they are right now. But that's what I envision the concept. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
So we haven't signed completely, Frank. We just signed under a concept.
These concepts have a way of becoming commitments. And that's what these workshops are about. And so you look back three years and say, oh, that's when we made that concept, which is now a commitment.
I'll try to slow the train.
My little head is going nodding up and down.
My, my learning curve will slow this down a little bit.
Well, I give credit to whoever came up with addressing the Elico Road. That corridor east-west is incredibly important to this county. And to see it being developed now in proximity to the airport, 75 and everything else, that's, whoever came up with that, I congratulate.
Well, I've been here longer than anybody. I'll take it.
Well, congratulate Frank. Thank you, Frank.
Much obliged.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I, I'd like to read back some of my notes.
Sure.
To you, and I want to make sure that we understand, you know, what our tasks are going to be. Commissioner, the, Mr. Chair, the, you know, the board can't make, can't vote on items during these workshops. And so we will, we'll bring this back to you on a, during a regular board meeting for you to give us formal direction on some of this. So just to describe for you what we would bring back. And Randy and Dave others, if, if I get some of this a little wrong, you know, interrupt me, okay? So with regard to Elico Road, it's option three. So we continue with the project with, without the PDNE and we expedite it to the extent that we can while we evaluate the long-term plan to, to build out that Sunshine Boulevard, Sunshine Boulevard corridor in future years. Randy, did I miss anything?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. Colonial Boulevard options.
Also look, review at the early incentives too. The incentives for early finish.
Yes. And then Colonial Boulevard options, we start with the installing, the safety and intersection improvements as we can afford to do it now to, to begin to improve the, those intersections. We go with bundle number three, and we explore adding an additional lane to the midpoint Bridge. We continue to evaluate the flyover. And then, at the same time, we'll be studying a construction schedule to create the most efficient phasing of those projects to cause the least amount of traffic congestion possible during that period. And would also, we'd like to work to create some funding options for you to consider.
And that would be great if, additionally, if Pete would be so kind to just share with the Commissioners, the, the debt we have associated with midpoint, the cash flow that we have. And, and if, if it's too difficult, don't bother, but just allocate what portion of that is Cape Coral and what portion is Sanibel?
That's easy.
Okay.
Randy, did I miss something?
Yeah. One thing I would add is the, again, next year in 2022, we're going to begin, or 2021, we're going to begin the design of the Cape westbound replacement span. I'd like to get some concurrence to, and that's currently two, two lane. I'd like to replace that as a three lane and explore during that same design period, adding a lane eastbound.
I support that.
I'm definitely for that. And again, not to sound like a broken record, but our debt's paid off next year on the Cape Coral Bridge.
Randy, did we, did we, did we get all of our questions answered?
Yes, and thank you very much, Commissioner.
Dave? Pete? Commissioners?
Any other discussions? Any other issues? We'll call it for the chairman. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.